Okay, I now call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM, and I'll have our coordinator call the roll. I'm sorry? We'll do the, let's do that first. Let's do a moment of silence with the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I jumped ahead.
Thank you. Now I'll have the coordinator call the roll.
Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Rollins?
Here.
Mr. Scirrano?
Here.
Mrs. McCullough?
Here.
Dr. Herner?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mrs. Powers?
Here.
With seven present, we have a quorum.
We do not have any media students here tonight, so we'll move right on with our recognition and celebrating the outstanding contributions of students and staff, and Mr. Earl Dotson, Jr. will make that presentation. Earl?
Thank you and good evening. Bayer Elementary School teacher Katie Mirsman was recognized in January with the 13 WREX Teacher of the Week Award. The second grade teacher uses technology, song, and dance to prepare her students for the future. She told WREX that she encourages her students to turn lessons into a song, a catchy way to remember what they learn in class. Thank you, Mrs. Mirsman, for all you do for your students in Rockford Public Schools. Please join me in congratulating this wonderful teacher who is here with us this evening. Katie Mirsman's mom is also here, so mom, we give you a lot of applause as well.
Okay, where you go, mom? Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. That is all.
Okay. Congratulations. We are now at the petitions and communications portions of our meeting when we invite the public to make comments. The First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees the rights of citizens to petition their government as well as provides for freedom of speech. Also, the Illinois School Code requires that there be a time at regular and special meetings for public comment. Thus, we are following those mandates during this petitions and communications portions of our agenda. According to Board Policy 2.230, the public comments portion of the meeting is limited to a total of 30 minutes. The Board will not respond to comments at this time. If it is appropriate, you'll be contacted in a timely manner by staff in response to your questions. In order to allow sufficient time for the business of the Board and to conduct our meetings in efficient and effective manner, we are requesting that you comply with the guidelines that are posted and that each speaker will be allowed no more than two minutes to address the Board. It is not appropriate to address individual Board members or individual administrators or discuss matters that would otherwise be confidential in such open meetings. I'll call two names at one time, and the one whose turn it is to speak and the person who will speak next. When you are the second person, please come to the front and sit in a vacant chair, and we do have our clock on the wall to help you with your two minutes. So, tonight, our first speaker is Elsie Wilson, to be followed by Reverend Anthony Greer. Could you hit the on button on the microphone there? It should be... No, it should be up by the... There you go.
I'm blind.
I was having a discussion with a college educator. I said to him, African-Americans and Hispanic-American males have a hard time passing tests, tests that require comprehension of math and algebra, especially with the trade unions. He replied to me, no, that is not totally the reason for not comprehending math and algebra. It is because a lot of young people cannot read or are reading at a low level. My question to all of you is, why does this still happen? What is your action plan? To get to the root cause analyses and put forth effort, some real efforts, to correct us. Youth Court was introduced to District 205 by myself, Jesse Piskey, and my granddaughter Ariana Newton, who had went through a similar program at Freeport High School. Ariana talked to the Human Service Committee and a group of students in District 205 about Youth Court and how it works. Not only do we need to transform Rockford, we need to transform District 205.
Thank you. Thank you, Elsie. Reverend Anthony Greer, be followed by Apostle Brown.
Good evening. We're here again to discuss the behaviors of this district. First and foremost, as I looked at the mission, vision, and values, one of the statements was that the district must be good stewards of taxpayers' money. I have a question. There's eight retired principals that we bring back to work in this district that's receiving a TRS retirement plus district wages at $250 to $300 a day. On average, the pairs make $14,000 a year in a 10-month span. Within six months, these people can make anywhere from $30,000 to $35,000. Where is the good stewardship with that? Also, students will feel valued and empowered to reach their full potential. What is full potential when there's no view of African-American staff and leadership positions, and all young black men are being on the top of the arrest list? Every student and staff have the right to work and be in a safe, secure, and nurturing environment. What is a nurturing environment when we have half your, black staffs are being dismissed without full opportunity to serve our children, and instead of feeding all of our children, we're feeding the children that are misplacing money, water, and crackers? How many African-American administrators have retired from this district? I bet you no one can tell us, because there has not been one that has been retired and been brought back to work in the place of these principles that we're missing. Who will replace West, Auburn, East, and any other school? Will we have any African-American males be replaced there? We have several that's in place waiting for getting a job, but I guarantee you they will be overlooked. Goal four was equality staff, staff retention. We would rather retain those that cost us thousands of dollars that violate school policies and release those that empower, embrace, and encourage. We have already failed the mission, values, and goals, so it's time for a new leader. It's time for the cabinet to step down. We need a new superintendent.
We thank you, District 205, for giving us this opportunity to speak to you. I want to speak about the graduation rate of PSAE, which is 39 percent, ISAT, which is 41 percent, graduation rate, which is 68 percent, reading for college is 28 percent, graduating for blacks are 59 percent, graduation rate for black males is 61 percent, graduation for black females is 75 percent, and the Spanish community is 70 percent, males 61 percent, females 75 percent, and our board is happy with those numbers, and we're paying a district, I mean, our $210,000 per year for, I don't know, I can't say his name, but anyway, we need to really look at that. The other thing I want to say, we have ministers that also, that are former minister alliance to talk to the Board that does not represent the community, because they have not went out and talked to the community. So, we do not want those pastors to stand with the Board and meeting in back rooms, and the community does not know what they're meeting about, so when they come out with a resolution, we don't know nothing about what they have decided to agree with you on. So, we hope that you meet with all pastors, and the pastors are really concerned about our children that are in school, and the graduation rate, that we can get a better Board here. Thank you very much.
Henry, to be followed by Yakol Mohammed. Sorry, may not have said that properly.
Just want to bring back the attention of the utter failure of this school board. Some of these statistics are deplorable. You have a 47 percent black male special ed graduation rate. You have 80 percent of a black and Latino population, but less than 5 percent of the teachers are black. There's no place in America you can go where you will find a majority of white students being governed by all-black anything, or anything of that stat. So, we're dealing with a situation here where really, we're not coming to ask you for anything. How can you have 68 percent of the children in the schools graduate, then the schools are labeled a dropout factory? So, as the black community, we understand that if white America gets a cold, black America gets pneumonia. So, we are now in a situation where we're not really here to ask for anything. We're not really here to discuss what it is that you can do for you. You have a track record being a school board in Rockford, and we know you, and it would be foolish of us to think that a snake would stop slithering and that a snake would one day walk upright. So, we are here to let the notice be known that we're not about to deal or ask you for justice. We don't expect it to come from you. There's a track record in this city, which goes into the history of America when blacks came here, blacks and the attitude and the mind state towards blacks 400 years ago, when blacks were enslaved. Well, you say it's different now, but according to the numbers and statistics, the intentions and the motives in the mind state of the school board is no different now than it was 400 years ago. So, we would be foolish to sit here and think that you would give us some type of justice. We don't want to sit at no table with you. We don't want to come to you with no petition. We don't have nothing to talk about. We can't expect you to change. It is our fault now that we have depended on that which has been undependable since we've been here, and so this is another notice to let you know that the mistreatment of our educators and the mistreatment of our children will no longer be tolerated. That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Henry. Yakol Mohammed, to be followed by Allison Wong. Allison Wang, to be followed by Deanne Baldwin.
Well, good evening, everyone, and so I'm just going to say here, I think that the Board is doing an excellent job in rewarding contracts when it comes to construction. When there was basically almost no money, the Board was able to rub two fingers together and create the goal to spend on new buildings. It's marvelous that RPS is expanding, although on borrowed money. RPS is upsurging, ascending, and growing. However, we cannot afford to forget what made Rockford strong in the first place, our manufacturing. With companies such as Hamilton, Sunstrand, Woodwork, Governor, and Ingersoll, Rockford has always been on the bleeding edge of industrial innovation, complemented by rigorous math and science education aimed towards creating the next generation of innovators and engineers. And in RPS 205 recent years, fundamental math and science classes have been diluted to create easier vocational courses. And this isn't just applied to math and science courses. This has also been happening with English and reading classes. Their standards have been cut as well. More students are graduating, but they find themselves without the skills to succeed in the workplace. Manufacturers are increasingly forced to look elsewhere in order to find the talent they need to support their operations. This is not something that we should be proud of. Should we not, like, try to keep up the rigor of education? The question is, will Rockford be able to keep up with its competitors overseas in the 21st century? Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Deanne Baldwin.
Good evening to the Board and Administration. You know, my face is not new. I've been advocating for African-American students and equity in general for years. You all know why we're here. You know what the situation is, and most importantly, you know you would not tolerate these stats and situations if it were flip-flopped, if it were white students who were having the brunt of all of these struggles in this district and in this city. You know you wouldn't tolerate it. Parents Partnering for Equity in Education has tried to meet with this administration and Board for years, and we've, even up until weeks ago, we've asked to meet with the current superintendent, who has just outright refused. We attempted on many occasions to address the multitude of policies that lend itself to the historical and current state of disparities between African-American students and the white subgroup particularly, as well as the disparity of African-American students as compared to the number of African-American teachers and principals. Policies such as the retention policy that fails numerous African-American students at the middle and high school level as opposed to the elementary level, the zone policy, which resulted in kids walking in sub-zero weather last week and Monday from the intersection of Rockton and Hallstead all the way to West Middle School, while I watched Marshall and Montessori Schools chauffeur in 30 buses of students. Some of those buses only had three students on a bus. How dare you? We also have looked at the discipline policy, which has displaced African-American students. Some have no return date. Shame on you, but we're here to let you know it stops. It stops today. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanne. Thank you all for your input. Are there any Board member comments at this time? Mr. Connor?
Yep. Number one, congratulations. Last night was the REBA finals. Louis Lemon won the girls for elementary, and Washington won the boys in basketball. Give me two seconds. Also, want to congratulate Janelle Ferguson. She was one of 50 out of 490 who won honorable mention from the IHSA for 2014-15 All-State Academic Team, and congratulations to Lieutenant Carla Redd, who is a West High grad and a new lieutenant with the Rockford Police Department.
Any other Board member comments at this time? Okay, not, we'll go ahead with the consent portion of our agenda, including the following consent items, the meeting minutes of February 10th, accounts payable, purchase orders, payroll, contracts under $10,000, and travel. And the following bid recommendations, IFB-15-24, which is the locker renovation project, IFB-15-29, which is the Johnson Elementary School asbestos abatement project, IFB-15-30, which is the Conklin Elementary School asbestos abatement, and IFB-15-31, which is Lathrop Elementary School asbestos abatement. The other consent items, including the interest transfer, the financial results year-to-date through January of 2015, the monthly investment report, the 2015-16 academic calendar, resolution regarding policy 8.30 appeal hearing, and the Freedom of Information log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any consent items that Board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
Eight.
All of eight? Any others? Not, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the consent items not pulled.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
All right, I'll now take a motion and a second to approve the bid recommendations listed under item number eight.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Questions or discussion? Not, then I'll have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of the bid recommendations under item eight, A through D.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
We are now at the closed session consent agenda items, including the resolution notice to terminate GC and the HR organizational report and professional development report. And the following closed session student discipline, in which expelled or suspended students are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. The expulsion for the following student, KAS-3, is held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year and the first semester of the 2015-16 school year, being executed on or before the next board meeting. The following student, JON-6, is expelled for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year and the first semester of next school year, the 15-16 school year. Expulsion for the following students, ACC-10 and RAG-13, are held in abeyance contingent upon a conditional probationary agreement for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year and the first trimester of the 2015-16 school year, being executed on or before the next board meeting. And the following student, LRC-14, is expelled for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year. And the following students have been granted a conditional probationary agreement. Those are students ALH-1, TH-2, DLG-7, CAGJ-8, CSB-9, LGL-11, CRB-12, NNT-15, and TJM-16. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Mr. Rollins. Are there any items that Board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Ms. Jackson?
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Ten, eleven, and twelve. That would be all of them. Okay, I'll take a motion and a second then to approve item 10A and B, the resolution notice to terminate, and the HR organizational report and PD development report.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. There is no discussion. The coordinator call the roll on the approval of items 10A and B.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Ms. Jackson, okay if I do 11 and 12 together then? Okay, I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of the closed session items 11 and 12, the student disciplines.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor?
Second.
Second by Dr. Herner. Have the coordinator call the roll on the approval of student discipline items listed under 11 and 12.
Dr. Herner?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
No.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
Thank you. I will now move on to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
I'd like to cede my time to Mr. Weisman to talk about our charter. In your packets was an executive summary that just outlines what we have done in the Accountability Department for one of our charter schools that's up for renewal this year. If you remember, last year, we went through the renewal process for a Galapagos charter and Legacy Charter. This year, we are in the renewal process for CICS, or CRCSO. The organization is CRCSO, and the school is CICS Jackson. Everything that we've done has been positive. The charter completed their application in a timely manner. It was complete. Our legal department started working with them last year. There were some concerns about governance and structures last year with the previous two charters, if you remember, and we started conversations with CICS last year so that we didn't have to have those conversations now, just about their governing status and some of their structures. Their application was great. Everything was in on time. We did take a team to their school and go through a day-long site visit where we interviewed staff, students, stakeholders, their Board, and their administration. I reviewed in the executive summary those things which a Board has authorization for and the reasons why a Board could determine to make a decision not to renew a charter. I also then included in the executive summary just kind of bullet points for each of those different areas. Probably of most significance is the fact that through our work in the last few months reviewing their application and going on the site visit, we didn't find any severe things that were out of place as far as a charter is concerned with their agreement with us and state code. Their audits have come back clean. Because CICS, Jackson, belongs to a larger network of charters. They have some protocols in place that our other charters don't, which include they actually have an office very similar to us. They have an office of accountability, basically, that goes through and monitors their charter on a regular basis. And they contact me on a monthly basis and ensure that all their documents are in. So the timeline has been included in the executive summary for the upcoming proposal or renewal decision on March 10th. I will come with a final recommendation from the Accountability Committee. We're talking with President Scirvano about we have to have an open hearing, a public forum for that charter. So we're looking at sometime that night doing that, hopefully as part of the board meeting. And then on the 24th, we look at a second reading of that contract. Currently, our legal representatives are discussing with their legal representatives the contract and any points of discussion that we need to there. I told CICS they didn't need to come tonight, but I did ask them to reach out to you and invite you to come visit their school. I told them you would definitely be expecting that they were here when we did the first reading of the contract and the second reading of the contract. So they will be here and then explain that if we, whatever night we do end up having the open hearing, that you will probably want to hear from their students and their staff, just thoughts about their school. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have today, but then you'll see me for the next two board meetings as well. Just want to make sure we're communicating everything that you need for the decision.
Any questions, Mr. Rollins?
Yeah. I was just thinking, so last year, we negotiated quite a few changes to the contracts for the other two charters, and we never really get updates on that. How's that working out? Are things working the way we had hoped they would with the changes that we made to the contracts?
Yeah. Great question. So both of the charters, a large, a significant part of the changes that we recommended had to do with their governing structures, their, the trainings that they had to go through to be more in line with state code. As part of that, they had to turn in proof of training for a handful of different types of board professional development that their members need to go through. Both charters have done that. Both charters have been moving their board membership around, and we still aren't at a full board capacity as far as the numbers of board members for both of the charters, but they expect to be there by the end of the year. Both charters have been compliant around sharing of data, although I'll tell you, the big push for that will be at the end of the year. But we expect that they'll be compliant for that. So we've been doing okay. We're still monitoring their board membership and waiting until the end of the year for that. But they did make changes that we asked them to for the first six months and got that training in for the first six months.
Just to follow up on, because what I was actually thinking about when you mentioned the accountability, I was thinking that we had, I thought, made an attempt to get more interim assessment data out of the two charters. Are we doing that?
We will get the interim assessed. The agreement tells them that they need to give us their interim assessment data by the end of the year as opposed to throughout the year. We get that at the end of the year, which is why the big push will be at the end of the year.
Can we request that they come and talk to us?
Sure can. And I will do that.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
With respect to the CICS, they were one of the schools that were identified, along with some other ones within the district, that were low performing?
Yes.
Can you just speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, definitely.
Showing progress?
Yeah, definitely. So we have a handful of schools that were identified, just to make sure everybody knows what Dr. Harner's asking, that were identified by the state of Illinois as kind of lowest performing in the state, along with four of our schools. CICS was one of the schools that was identified for that. As such, they went through the same, better word than rigmarole, and kind of went through the same rigmarole that we had to go through. They received a site visit from the state. They are receiving coaching from the state. So on a regular basis, a couple of times a month, we have coaches from the state coming to our leadership team meetings. They are doing that as well and complying with that. They still struggle with their student population, and they'll be real honest with you about that. But all of the resources that we are getting and the pushes that we're getting and the meetings that we have to attend for those, on behalf of those four schools, they are going through as well. They're doing that in an autonomous way. They're not doing that with us. They are interacting directly with the state. I don't know if that answers your question, though.
We don't have any data, so we don't know if they're making progress since the initial identification of the shortage.
Correct. Not till the end of the year.
Ms. Powers?
Do you expect that we will, or do they expect to have the ISAT reading scores, which currently is blank for 2014 in time?
We've actually gone back and forth. I've personally gone back and forth with the state on that and to why there is no state, there just isn't a state score right now for reading for them available from the state. So I'm working to try to get that. I've been calling and working through the state on. And right now, with some of the overloads they have with the new state assessment, we're just trying to figure out why that wasn't reported last year. It wasn't reported from the state. It wasn't anything that CICS has cut from us. They didn't get it from the state either.
And then just, I mean, I can obviously see the trend, but have, is there a litmus test as to whether these are statistically significant changes?
In their scores?
Right.
I will tell you that between 2011 and 2012, that's not a significant change. Between 2012, for the math, between 12 and 13, that's a significant drop. And 13 to 14 is a significant jump, about four percentage points. But between 11 and 14, we don't have really a good litmus test from that because the state changed their norms, the norms for those tests.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Jackson?
Can you please elaborate a little bit when you said they struggle with their student population? What exactly are you speaking to?
Yeah. So CICS has been real transparent with me about how they, they know that they are not hitting the mark that they want to hit with their students. There, some of the discussion that we had last year with those two charters was their ability to increase or roll up in grades. Legacy has a K-12 contract, and they were adding a grade every year. Galapagos had a K-8 contract, and there's some discussion as to whether a new contract would allow them to roll to 12. It doesn't, and that change wasn't made. They are still a K-8 contract. CICS has a K-12 contract, but they currently don't have any intentions. They've been K-8 for a couple of years. They don't have any intentions to roll 912. And they'll tell, they tell me, Beth Purvis, who is a former executive, chief executive officer of CICS and now is working with the new governor, she tells me, when she sits across the table, she says, "Dan, we don't feel like we have figured out our student population, the poverty that comes in, the social-emotional health issues that come into our building. We are still working to figure that out. It's one of the tougher schools that we have in our network, and we also think that you're doing great things with high schools. We don't have plans right now to roll up into a high school because, for those two reasons." So they look at their scores and they say, "We should be doing better," and we're trying to figure that out. But because of the low ability that comes into the school, coupled with socio-economic struggles and social-emotional struggles, they're still trying to figure out how to best move the needle for those students.
And low ability, you're referring to their academic ability of the students?
Just academic ability when the students come into the school before CICS sees them.
Aren't most of them Rockford Public Schools students, right?
Most of the students they get, come into them in kindergarten. So they haven't been in our, in our schools yet.
Any other questions? Did I, I'm trying to remember their governance. They have three board members, and do, did I recall this right, that all three were not from this area? Does that sound right?
Miss Holdley might be able to answer that better, but they've been working through that.
All right.
One is certainly from this area, Nate.
Nate Bryant. He works.
Nate Bryant, yeah.
I think what you saw probably is, somewhere I have his profession, and he works in Chicago, but is a local representative. Their board originally resolved, included more local individuals. And because of our just expression of, hey, we want to make sure we don't have conflict of interests, they are working on switching their board membership around. So they, currently, they have less people on the board as they, as they go through that transition. They have told me they have people that are willing to be on the board that would help that conflict of interest. And those board members have committed verbally, but are waiting to see what happens through this process before they formally jump on the board.
Okay. Mr. Connor?
I noticed they switched from Edison Learning to Distinctive Schools. Is there any driver behind that that we know of?
Definitely. Definitely. So charter some, the two charters that you saw last year, they, the charter and the management organization work together. Galapagos, it's basically the same entity. And Legacy, some of the concerns around governance were they had a management company and they have a governing board, and there was some overlap there. The board, at the beginning, the onset of the agreement five years ago, used Edison Learning as the management organization to run the day-to-day operations of the school and the curriculum and professional development for the staff and for the students. And they just, at the beginning, said this is not working as part of their mindset to, we need to figure this out. They decided that the approach that Edison Learning took, they didn't, they didn't like. So they just switched management companies. They feel, they'll tell you, they feel like they're on a better track. They see more of the culture and more of the focus on student instruction that they want to see with the new management company. That, it was a very specific, direct decision that they made to try to improve results.
So it says four charters are also done by distinctive for CICS in Chicago. What's the population of CICS schools?
Total as a whole? I have to get back with you on that.
So do we know, I guess the point is?
CICS traditionally serves underperforming schools.
Right. I think it's more so for distinctive, they manage five altogether. Is that a majority or just a small part of CICS's?
That is, I believe it's about a quarter, a quarter to a third of CICS.
Okay.
I believe there's between 15 and 20, but I will need to follow up.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I'd also like to ask our finance team to come up and talk about our, the sale of $60 million in bonds and to give the board an update on that sale, which I believe went very well. So, thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Okay. And you should have a copy of this presentation at your place setting for you. So this first chart is basically a representation of the past 10 years for the municipal market data, which is similar, which is the Dow Jones, but for municipal bond markets. And so one of the things that we should point out is that when the $100 million was issued about two years ago, if you look where the first arrow is and then where the second arrow is, where we issued just last week, you'd see that actually there's been some volatility over the past couple of years, but we pretty much landed exactly where we were when we issued bonds two years ago. And some of the volatility, so the initial plan was to issue the bonds much earlier this year than what we did. And of course, there was a change in market. One was, of course, Elgin going out and issuing bonds. But the next thing was the simple fact that the market just, there's been a lot of uncertainty due to the recent increase in oil and grease prices and some of the other market factor indicators. This document here actually shows what the final numbers are for our levy with issuing the new bonds. And as you'll see, so there's a horizontal line. Anything above that line is prior to the issuance of the bonds that we've just issued. And then below that is the debt service schedule, as well as what we're anticipating our tax rate to be, as well as the EAV growth and other assumptions and factors. And so assuming that this year, when we receive our final EAV numbers from the counties, this, of course, assumes that if it goes down the 5%, that we should land exactly at the 66.7 cents. And of course, that is the number that has been discussed and that Stifel promised that we would land somewhere around that number, no greater than. And so if you look at our total debt service at the end of our payback period, you'd see that that number is just roughly $347.5 million. Okay. So one of the things that we're going to review here is really where we landed versus what the projections and assumptions were. So the middle column that has 2013 projections is when the first $100 million was issued. These were the assumptions at that time. And then the next column would be the actual results. And so in terms of the voted project funds, there was just under the $39 million 2013. And then, of course, we issued the $39 million for actual results. For the health, life, safety, at that time, there was a thought that we would issue just under $15 million of health, life, safety bonds, but we actually ended up issuing 19.9 million bonds. And a lot of that had to do with the changes in the assumptions and understanding, excuse me, what our true interest costs were, et cetera. And so, for example, the EAV assumptions back in 2013 was anticipating a negative 3% growth in EAV. Well, this year, when it was updated, we actually looked at a negative 5%. And so those factors were factored into, of course, this new issue. The percentage of cabs or capital appreciation bonds at the time, it was looked at that it would be about 33.7% of this issue would be cabs. And we actually ended up at 27.3%, which is actually very positive for the district because issuing cabs are expensive, a little bit more expensive due to the higher interest rate that's associated with them. However, they are an excellent tool that can be used to manage our tax rate. So it's always good to minimize the number of cabs that we issue. Our true interest cost provided us a great savings. So our true interest cost is the weighted average of all of the bonds that we issue. And so a couple of years ago, we were anticipating just under 5% would be the true interest cost. And for this issue, we actually came in just under 4%. So that saved us about 1%. And what we were able to do as a result of that interest savings would be, sorry, with the true interest cost and what the anticipated funds would be to issue an additional, the additional $5 million for the health, life, safety, and then have a true realization of a savings in terms of the interest cost. And so for this issue anticipated, two years ago, we thought the total cost would be 96.7 million, and it's actually coming in at $95,66,000. And that's with, of course, issuing $5 million more dollars than we originally anticipated. So just to share a little bit about who purchased our bonds. Institutional buyers, these were the larger ones who actually purchased millions and millions of dollars of our bonds. There are many more that are listed. But the other piece that I actually thought was very interesting is that in terms of what they call retail investors, so that's people like you and I who have $5,000 laying around to purchase bonds. We actually sold, there were actually $1 million worth of our district bonds sold within the state of Illinois, but mostly Rockford. So I thought that was very interesting. Stifel ran ads within our local newspapers to let, you know, our investors within our area know that we were issuing these bonds. And we actually got over a million dollars worth of people within the state of Illinois, but mostly Rockford, that purchased them. So within summary, we are at the point of where there were a few of you signing lots of closing documents today. Thank you for that. We are officially looking to have the close We are officially looking to have the closing on March 5th, which is next week, and funds in the bank. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. I'll go do, say anything else? All right, okay. We'll now move on to our committee reports and we'll start with Ms. McCulloch and the Education Committee report.
The Education Committee has not met since our last board meeting. I have asked Ms. Height-Carter just to give us an update where we are with the process, the ongoing process of the updating of the Student Discipline Code of Conduct. And we still have one more parent meeting left and she'll give us information on that as well.
Good evening, everyone. This is just a brief update on our advisory meetings and how they're going. We have our last meeting scheduled for this upcoming Thursday at Auburn High School at 5:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Thus far, we've covered the entire Student Code of Conduct in terms of recommendations and discussions. Our focus for this Thursday will be basically on the student success plans and support systems in the schools. We also are asking that the principals send more teachers because we have not had a really good turnout with our teachers this year. We've had more parents than anything else, which is great. But we do, we would like to have more teachers present. We are also looking at four meetings that we're conducting in the month of February and March for our Student Code of Conduct review sessions. And what we're doing with those is basically that those meetings consist of community members, board members, administrators, and our PTO presidents, et cetera. And they're going to be looking at the recommendations from the parent teacher advisory committees. And then those recommendations will be coming to the ad committee and then eventually to the board. So far, the parents and administrators have been at about a 20 to 33%, of those attending those meetings. And the teachers have been at about 5% to 6%. Any questions or comments?
Ms. McCulloch?
Yes.
No, no questions. I just wanted to tell her I appreciated her stepping up and sharing that with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our Education Committee will not be meeting in March. We will meet in April on the 6th in this room at 5:30. And at that time, we will, we will be discussing the updated Code of Conduct. So that ends my report.
Dr. Hunter?
Could I just, one quick comment on the Code of Conduct meetings. There really haven't been anybody there. And so we would appreciate if more people would come. I know this is the last one, but if we could have a robust turnout, that would be great.
Thank you. Mr. Rollins, the Operations Committee report?
The Operations Committee has not met. We will meet in this room on Tuesday, March 3rd at 5:30 PM.
Dr. Harner, Facility Plan Oversight Committee. I know you've had a meeting.
We did have a meeting.
All right.
We had a meeting, we did the kind, I think, the final review of some of the reports. We handed this out in your packets at the closed session so that, we wanted everybody to get that. It's out on board docs for the public, so, in the library, under the Facilities Committee. So that's out there for everybody to review. But I wanted to for sure get it to the board members so they could see what, at least the numbers part of this, to give us feedback if there's anything in particular. There's one little adjustment that has to be made to this, but this is part of, at least the numbers part of it. We, at the meeting, we kind of talked through the whole process with respect to how Todd and his whole team interact with the teachers and the principals to get feedback, modification, ideas about the building, all within an attempt to work within the budget, obviously. We reviewed plans, upcoming plans for Welsh, Westview, Hillman, Whitehead, and Marsh, I believe. And we also, we, we talked about, we kind of, there's a little bit of a subcommittee that's going to get together to study the whole closing process a little bit more intensely so that we can understand the statutory, statutory constraints in the process so that we can start interacting with the community intelligently with respect to the eventual closings of schools. The first school that's slated to close is Walker. And it would, so the beginning of the, August of 2016, the beginning of that school year, Walker would not be utilized any longer. And so between now and then, there's, there's going to be lots of work with respect to demographic work. And as the projects in that area, Welsh, Westview, et cetera, are eventually completed, then transfer stuff will come out. But in, so, I mean, that's work that's going to be coming along. So the next meeting will be Tuesday, March 17th at 7:00 PM, somewhere in this facility.
All right.
Fourth floor, Superintendent's Conference Room.
Could you tell me who, who's serving on that subcommittee on the building closings?
Myself, Carrie Eklund, and Joe Miner. And we're going to, Joe, Ms. Miner is off for, she's on, she's away out of town for a few weeks, but we're going to try to touch base with Ms. Hodelly to kind of talk about this.
I'm not sure who was first, Mr. Rollins, were you first?
Doesn't matter.
Do you want to go first?
I can, I just have a quick question. So I see it says it, you announce, Dr. Harner announced that Mr. Jeff Holt has joined the committee. Why is that? Was there someone missing? Did you need more or?
Yes.
Rebecca Anderson.
Becky, Rebecca Anderson had to resign due to some family illness and responsibility. And so she resigned. And so we went back to the original group of applicants and Mr. Holt was added to the committee.
Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I guess I just want to have, ask questions about the subcommittee on the building closures. Is, is this the subcommittee or is this a preliminary subcommittee?
This is just a preliminary subcommittee to get a full understanding of what, what kind of the rules, constraints are so that then we can more formally start involving the community in the process. Whether that's, I mean, there's a variety of things that, that the district has the ability to do with these properties eventually, working with other governmental entities, et cetera. But we want, we felt as though the committee needed to have a better, at least the subgroup wanted to have a deeper understanding so we could debrief the larger committee to then start engaging community members appropriately.
Okay, I guess my, the concern I'll express is that although August 2016 seems like it's a long ways away, it really isn't. And particularly when you're talking about, you know, figuring out what to do with a building that we're going to be shutting down. And so I would ask that this preliminary subcommittee do its work quickly. We had said pretty specifically that we would involve the community in discussions about what to do with these sites. And so I'd like to see us get to a committee that has people on it that's actually doing that.
So the hope is that we would get together mid-March, although I have, I have to kind of wait for one of the members to get back into town. But, and to start, and so that, but, but a month from now, hopefully, we can have a, have a more defined, engaged process in place.
Mr. Connor?
A quick thank you to all the community members on that committee, as well as all the people that attended. We had a full house. So I thought that was very good. There was a lot of good discussion. And a particular thank you to Mr. Schmidt and the staff for doing a really good job. The numbers are very good. They put a lot of thought into what we have. So I would encourage people to go out to the website and look. It's very clear in terms of schedule, the money that's been appropriated, what we're doing with everything, including contingencies in the plan. So very good job. And I think the public will be interested. One quick comment on this. I think that one of the goals of this subcommittee is to find out the parameters of what we have to do. And as we understand it, there are some restrictions. But we've already had some ideas and one of the ideas floated is that there are some local governmental bodies that may be very interested in partnering up with us on the sites. So I think there's been some discussion already and we should be able to come to closure pretty quickly and get out with the public in plenty of time for comments and planning.
Ms. Jackson?
Just something clear, so what, I mean, I guess what are we expecting the public to say? What kind of input are they going to have in this process? Because the buildings are going to be closed, right? So what input are you seeking from the public, this subcommittee?
Well, so this initial committee is just going to try to understand the rules and with respect to what the school district can do and subsequently what, how they can partner with other governmental entities with respect to, as the schools close, what will be done with the property. So it was one of the goals of, that we not leave the, the schools in any sort of state of disrepair or become ISORS in the community. And if there are ideas or viable ideas that neighborhood members want to be able to float as possibilities to do with these sites, we want to try to offer a path, and I don't know what that path would be as I sit here and speak tonight, what options are available to do with the buildings. I mean, obviously, one of them is to demolish them and we have money in the budget to do that. But there might be other viable ideas to either partner with the city, to partner with the, the school district, and then to also partner with private individuals to have some final determination as to what to do with the, with either the buildings or the property. And so, but those will be, understanding the, what, what, what the legal steps that the district has to take was one of the first steps and that's what we want to try to understand. So then we can start, engage the community accurately.
Any other questions or comments in your next meeting, your next committee, full committee meeting? March 17th?
March 17th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM.
St. Patrick's Day. It is, okay, very good. And I heard a rumor, the budget and finance subcommittee meeting is planning to get back together again. Anybody know anything about that?
I do. We're, we're still working on, I'm still working with Mr. Rollins, some phone calls in to re, to, to get the band back together. Targeting March 17th as a, a potential date to reconvene the subcommittee as we're getting into the budget process.
Okay, very good. Okay, we'll move on to our action item tonight, which is the item 15A, which is the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement for purchasing group Houston-Galveston Area Council. This was presented. Is there a motion and a second to approve this purchasing agreement?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Connor, second by Ms. Powers. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have the coordinator call the role on the approval of the Houston-Galveston Purchasing Area Council.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Powers?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson? Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scravano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCulloch?
Yes.
Dr. Harner?
Yes.
The motion passes with six yeses and one no.
We are now on to new business, another business, which we have one item on here, which is Cyrus on the Autism Diagnostic Observation Scale II training.
Yes, good evening. I'm bringing before you tonight a professional development opportunity that we would like to offer our school psychologist. The Autism Diagnostic Observation Scale is one of the tests or instruments that our psychologists use. It's called the ADOS, ADOS II. When, when looking at a student and whether or not they meet the criteria for educational diagnosis or educational eligibility, excuse me, for the category of autism. So it, it's, it's the second edition. We've used the ADOS in the past. This is now a revised edition and additional training is required. So it's a two-day training. It is $11,000. There's some sense with it. It's like $11,030.
Yeah, no, I know it's in the thing.
$335.
So who would attend this training?
Our school psychologist. There's 27 of them.
There's 27 of them. That was my next question, okay? Ms. Powers?
So I know it says that it's covered by the grant, but do we budget for grant dollars? And was this budgeted within the grant dollars?
Yes, the, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act is our, is our federal grant for special ed. And there's a requirement in the grant that 5% of the grant is spent on professional development. And it has to be professional development for areas of special education. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Jackson, I'm sorry.
So I'm looking at Appendix C and it's, the prices are broken down. So there's a charge for $136.14 for training material shipping charge. And then almost $1,200 for training manuals and shipping charge. Why is, why aren't those being shipped together? Why is one so much more than the other?
One is manuals and one is just individual. I don't know that for sure. I can find out exactly what they're shipping. But this is a standard contract by the Western Psychology Services. That's who's providing, it's the, it's the company that produces the ADOS test and they come and do the training.
Is that what WPS stands for?
Yes.
What is that again?
Western Psychological Services.
If you could, because I'm just looking at.
I'm, I'll ask them to get, break that down. I, I don't know exactly how that is broken down between the training manuals and shipping charge. My assumption is that it's a notebook that they give to each of our psychologists with the training information inside of it. That's the $1,000, $1,188. But I will ask for a breakdown and get that to you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, this will come up for a vote on our March 10th. Are there any other new business items or agenda items for this evening? Ms. Jackson?
I'll put something out there. I've been hearing from parents and I know that we approved some contracts. I think, was it for our speech and language pathologists, the IUP. Some minutes are still not being met for some of our students. So I hope that we're looking into that.
Ms. Cyrus, you want to respond to that? We still have vacancies, I'm sure.
We, we have sent a letter to the parents of students that aren't receiving their special, their speech services. I'd like to remind you that we had 11 vacancies in the beginning of the year. We filled four or five of those with contracted services, so we still have seven vacant positions. We are working hard with the Human Resources Department to seek speech and language therapists, but they just aren't out there for us to hire at this point. The letter to the parents was a commitment from the district that as soon as we can secure, we're working to secure those services. We'll look at any of our staff that are willing to work over the summer and we will provide compensatory services for the amount of time that they missed.
All right. Any other further business for this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, same sign, we are adjourned at 8:04.
Please see. Okay, hold on. Let me get this, let me get.